Yeah.
You're being. One of those.
One J D.
It's uh. It's nine o'clock, so let's. I'm gonna call the meeting of the county commissioners to order and my room, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'd like to plead to comply the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Number two on the agenda is a call for public comments, so public comment can be made in person or by telephone. Um, at these two numbers, six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. If you have a phone, please silence it, and if you need to take a call, please step out of the room. Are there any conflict of interest items for any of the commissioners today?
No.
None for me? Hey, and I entertain a motion to approve our agenda for today, so motion by Van Duzen. Second by Johnson, um, I think we we may have a need for an exec. So, uh, Commissioner Swears' absence today, um. So any changes, other changes, comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's say no. Okay, I entertain motion number five to approve our minutes from last week.
So moved.
By Johnson.
Second.
Second by Waterman, changes or corrections, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no. That motion carries. Discussion with, number six is a discussion with Crans Insurance regarding employee health insurance renewal rates.
Come on up. Good morning.
We just jumped down with our team. Thank you. Okay, okay, all right, all right, okay.
Well, the side.
Please have a seat and tell it, tell us your name and.
Touch the button and tell us who you are.
You are on the hot seat.
Yep.
You're being.
I'm Jamie Riley with Crans Insurance. And I gave you Samford's renewal for you with your current plans. Um, the proposed new increase is five point two percent. Um, and on the backside of that sheet. I marked off the plans that we've been discussing. The last couple of months.
Where the where the Xs are on this?
Those are the plans that you guys for twenty twenty four.
Okay.
So the same thousand dollar deductible, the two thousand dollar deductible, and then the HSA.
For the ones we've shared with the employees already?
Yep.
Okay. Hey, so.
So if I could just have for reiterate, so for the thousand dollar deductible, what's the amount of the single coverage and?
Yeah, since we can't see, we can't put it on the screen, so yeah, that'd be good.
So for the thousand dollar deductible, single cost is nine forty four fifteen. Family cost is two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty eight cents. The two thousand dollar deductible, the single cost is eight hundred and fifty five dollars and twenty five cents. The family cost is two thousand one thirty eight twelve. And then the high deductible HSA plan with the four thousand dollar deductible. The single cost is six hundred and seventy one dollars and sixty four cents. With a family cost of one thousand six hundred and seventy nine dollars and eleven cents.
And then the backside has a bit more, I guess, or this is.
Yep, that's your current, your twenty twenty three.
Oh, it's twenty three, okay, got it, all right. Any questions, because we we do have an item later, two items later on the agenda to approve. Um, both the these rates, these plans, and then the split with what the, you know, what the county's gonna cover versus what they employee will pay.
Did you guys all get that copy as well that you have there?
I did not get this one, you've seen this one.
Yep.
I don't know if you've seen the most recent one of this, we have.
Yep, that was emailed out by Natalie and Natalie sent that.
Okay.
But I. I I brought copies of everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
So it gives, yeah. Two.
You have been on your spreadsheet.
I had, yeah, but this this has a bit more detail on the on some of the, you know, the co-pays and stuff. Sure, yeah. Some of the co-pays, it's. I can, yeah.
Oh, no, you're fine, we just got started, so.
I'm not sure if that's gonna be a.
Yeah, Texas hard, yeah. Oh, that's, yeah. Might work on my. And a hush falls over the throne.
Strong this whole thing.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we're talking, we're waiting on, it's just to, so we can show on the screen with the splits, so basically with the, I don't know if you wanna go over this a little bit more with us, um. So you covered the uh, the rates. Um, in the bottom. But the she covers some of them, let's see. Splits. You said about. Okay. Well.
Yep, we're kind of what they count.
Yeah, yeah, just so, just so, yeah.
Okay. So for the thousand dollar single deductible plan, um, the county is gonna be pitching in nine hundred and twenty five dollars a month. So the employee cost would be nineteen dollars and fifty cents for that plan. Um, the two thousand dollar deductible single plan, that one will be free. The county will be paying the full eight fifty five twenty five of that plan. The four thousand dollar deductible with the um, health savings. Um, the county is gonna be kicking in the full six seventy one sixty four, so there'd be no cost to the employee for that plan. Um, also with that, the county agreed to pitch in two hundred and fifty three dollars and thirty six cents a month. For the monthly contribution for that, with an additional thousand dollars upfront to fund those plans. For the single and the family. The thousand dollar deductible for the family. Um, county is willing to pitch in one thousand six hundred dollars for that plan. So the employee cost would only be seven hundred and sixty dollars and thirty eight cents. The two, the two thousand dollar. Um, deductible plan for the family, the county's also pitching in six hun- sixteen hundred dollars for that plan. The employee would pay five thirty eight twelve a month for that plan. And then the four thousand dollar did HSA plan, um, the county once again is pitching in sixteen hundred for that plan. So their cost a month would only be seventy nine dollars and eleven cents. Um, and like I stated, that also um, would include the thousand dollar upfront for their HSA to get that started for them.
Okay. All right. Okay, and then on the on this sheet, this just has a little bit more about the co-pay, so like, that, you know, so the big thing about. HSAs, I think, because this is the first time we're offering an HSA, is that, you know, the employee um, up to, is paying up until the deductible, but in the end.
Correct, yep.
You know, they 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 could end up with less out-of-pocket costs, or less, they definitely have less max out-of-pocket costs, that's.
With.
So it's a different way of thinking about it.
Yep, and with the savings from, you know, their twenty twenty three plans. Um, they can also contribute out of their paycheck to build up that savings as well into their HSA. Um, and we did include that on the election sheet if they did want to contribute more than what the county originally put in. Um, there's a payroll deduction form. And also they can go on to the um, the further website and create an account and also contribute that way to a lot of their bank account or whatever they wanna do that.
Okay. So any questions? All right, so we'll we'll just come up later in the agenda, so I appreciate your.
Yeah.
So now, this is, so basically the thing that we have to approve is both, you know, the plans and then those splits that, basically the the county contributions, so the two separate, there'll be two separate actions. All right, thank you. Yeah.
Guys as well, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, number seven, monthly reports. Byway, come on down, Rick.
Chair, are we taking Terry during executive session?
Yeah, yeah, we are, yeah.
Okay.
So it's the plan.
Do you need to do that now?
No.
At least we don't think so, well, no.
It's up to you, I guess.
It's hard, it's hard to break up the, when we're streaming, it's a little trickier if we don't, we don't have to, it's good to wait, so. Terry, can you hang around for, oh, you're fine, okay, all right.
All right, okay, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Start off with uh. My monthly report. Our mowing was completed, we were able to get into some of the fields and stuff that were harvested. Knocked down some of the weeds along the edge of the fields and to help, guys did a really nice job. Gravelling project still continues, we got all of our dark spots covered up, now we're working on spots where rocks stick up out of the road. This summer was really bad for keeping gravel on the road, didn't have enough moisture to keep the gravel stuck to the road. It dry out and it just pulls off to the shoulders and the rocks stick up, so that's what we're doing now, is covering up those places. We also were able to haul some rocks on the shoulder of the road that we built up on County Road four one. That spot stayed soft all year, the water's higher in the this fall than it had been all year. They've got a couple extra rains that nobody else got. And uh, we were able to complete that project. We still have tons of riprap that we could haul. If not, it'll depend on the weather, we've got to bin the waters down, we have some places that we need to get some riprap to. Our paving project that was supposed to be completed this fall did not get done. It will get rolled over into next year, I talked to the contractor and they will honor the bid that they gave us this year. Because when they were supposed to come, it's the only time it was raining and then it got real cold. And I wouldn't let them pave when it wasn't forty degrees and rising.
Where's that at, Rick?
This is on County Road twenty three, six miles north of State Highway twenty. So. That will get done next year. Like I said, we're still gravelling, we have trees in the right of way when we get done gravelling that we'll go out and take down. We go into the small towns where our mortar graders go to plow snow, we'll trim those trees to help us out, to help the town out. Um. That's about all I have for that. This is, um. The school of Florence. Is going to open up their new building here shortly. And it's across the road from the current school. And where the red circles are, they would like us to add stop signs. Cause like on the end of Main Street, that will become a four-way stop. And then when you go south. Or when you're coming north from the south. On Klein Street, they'd like one there, a stop sign there, because there's already a stop sign on the east side of the road. And one on the, they want one on the west side where they come out of the parking lot. They wanted one just north of that and I'm, I told them that probably wouldn't talk it'll work there, because there's no sidewalk or anything there to cross the road. Their sidewalk is right on the north or on the south side of Main Street where the new stop sign is. That's where they're gonna cross the road, they've got sidewalk coming out of the building there. And then also where the new stop sign is on the north side of Main Street. Right now, there's a fifteen mile an hour speed limit sign, we'll move that back to the north. Oh, roughly a hundred feet, there's a school crossing or a school sign there, it's on a double post, we'll put the fifteen mile an hour speed limit sign there and then add a stop sign. Where the fifteen mile an hour speed limit sign is.
Okay.
And uh, I talked to the mayor of Florence, he has no opposition with us putting the stop signs up to help the school. So I told the principal. That I'd show it to you guys and if you guys wanted to talk to him, I'd have him come next week. But uh, I would like to get the stubs put in the ground tomorrow before the ground gets hard, because we've got. Signs to put up, so I guess it's up to you guys. Because this is a. With the new school on the other side of the road, kids will go back and forth.
Right, what's, so I'm guessing, is this a budgeted, is on?
No, this was not a budgeted item, this.
Is, who's, are we paying for it as?
Well, that's something that uh, the principal and I have talked about, so to see where the money's gonna come from to pay for this.
Initially, they wanted us to close the road.
Correct. What what what's the cost of putting start to finish on a stop sign? Stump up, you're looking at over a hundred dollars for the the sign, the stub, the post, and then labor on top of that. So you're you're looking at roughly a hundred and fifty dollars of these.
Oh, that's.
Guesstimate two hundred, that's just a guesstimate, between a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars. So there's four new signs and then moving the signs, because you've got labor, we all have two guys up there in a vehicle, so.
Do we, are we, so is that just material, the hundred and fifty dollars, that's just material, or is that?
Yeah, that's just material, well. To buy the post and everything, you're looking at over a hundred dollars for the post and stuff, the extra fifty is for the labor, so.
Okay. Um.
And like I said, I, that was something that the principal and I had discussed and.
Hmm.
Well, I told him we'd figure out somewhere along the line who was going to pay for it, so. Because these are signs that. Technically, the county does not need, except for the school, so.
There's uh, okay, what's, what's, I guess, did you have a question?
Yeah.
So in, this is in the city of Florence.
Correct.
It's, obviously that's in our county.
Yep.
But it's in their ci- their city limits, right?
But it's our county roads.
It's our county roads, yes. Okay, I was just trying to clarify it, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't say that, but both, both the north. South road and the east-west are county roads. It's kind of right by, about two blocks south of the Catholic Church. Yep.
So, I guess, the other question.
Approximately a block, block, block and a half, something like that, yep.
I mean, just, I mean, I'm guessing school districts don't cover signage typically, and and if it's a county road, that whoever owns the road is responsible for signage, is that the rule, is that generally the way it's done?
Pretty much, but this is, this is added on, so like I said, I, we visited and uh. We'll, we'll work something out that who's gonna pay for it, so.
So Rick, I just wanna make sure, looking at the map here, that I understand, so going from the south-north on County Road twenty three. That stop sign in the lower right-hand corner would be for northbound traffic, correct? The same way a block north of that at Main and Sixth.
Yep, that would, that would become a four-way stop.
Okay, and then, and but in that, Main and Sixth would become a four-way stop, okay? And the intersection at Klein and Sixth would be a three-way stop?
Yes, the, see the, on the south side of the new building, that's just basically a parking lot, there's not a street there, that does not go any further.
Right here.
Yeah, this is just. This is just parking in here.
Oh, okay, so this.
Come up to leave the the parking lot, they'd have to stop.
So, so this is just a lot?
Yeah, there's, there's nothing there but field behind it.
Okay, that's why that would be a three-way stop.
Yes, correct.
So, okay, so this was just, they just didn't, hadn't gotten to thinking about this as they were building the school and all, basically, until.
Like Myron said, that they wanted us to close the street so they could have the street, no street in between there.
Okay.
So.
All right.
That didn't happen, so now they just wanna be able to have.
This is option two.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, I get it, all right.
Well, I think, isn't this what's a new school, there've been several options that have been kicked around, putting in an overhead. Walkway.
That I guess I hadn't heard of.
That was kind of private, that was, that was kicked around a little bit.
This is quite a bit cheaper than that.
So this is.
This is, this is the cheaper option.
Yeah, this is, this is roughly six hundred-ish dollars.
Between six hundred and a thousand dollars to do everything.
Okay.
The only concern that I would have is when you're adding four new stop signs to. These two intersections where you already have three in place, that's a seven total stop signs within two blocks. It's an odd number, and so for traffic going from the north to the south and not having to stop here. Are we gonna have pedestrians here, they get this intersection mixed up with the one to the north of that and running out?
Where you're at.
In front of traffic.
No crosswalk or anything.
And that's at Klein and Sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there's no crosswalk, if there had been a crosswalk there, I'd have been more intent.
So there's no doors for students to exit the building on that side of the building?
Because you come out of the new building, you walk north on the sidewalk.
Okay.
And then across the street, because that's where the door is to enter the building on the west end of the.
Okay.
The old school. Right up by the stop sign by main is where the entrance is.
And who's requesting this? The school district?
School.
Okay.
But but since it's a stop sign and we're responsible for the roads, we.
This is, this uh.
They paid for it, the owner of the road pays for the.
Well, see, that's there again, that's what we were talking about, because the other day when I talked to him, I said that would be one of the questions that would get asked, who was going to pay for the new stop signs and then placing them, so.
This is not on the agenda, so I don't think that we can act.
That's why I just, informing you today, so.
If you need to, yeah, but if you need to put this.
You need to put the, dig the holes.
You start working, yep. I mean, if you need us to.
And basically, all's it be would be the stubs today, or tomorrow, excuse, whatever, as if we don't approve it. Then we won't put anything in stubs. So it's not here for the.
I guess.
With with winter coming on, rather, we know it's gonna come on rather quickly, and the ground's gonna get a little bit stiff, and we'd take a lot less labor to put in five stubs right now.
Yeah.
And we would get a better job.
Yeah.
Then. Well, and not put in the stop signs, because the stop sign bulk to the bottom of the, bulk of the stub.
Correct.
And if we. And and for the, and the stub and the labor is how much?
The stub is roughly twenty bucks. And then the labor, we'd have. Thirty dollars an hour.
Okay, so we got sixty dollars a stub, roughly, may maybe on the top side.
Yeah.
And we're talking about a safety factor here for kids.
So we, if we wanted to, we could, we could just declare an emergency, yeah.
Well.
And and I can have.
Concern, I mean.
I mean, Mr. Reed come in and talk to you next week too, if you want, if you would like.
Okay.
I I guess for me, I would like to know, um, you know, we're doing this in the middle of the school year. And where we're putting up stop signs and and parents are used to driving this, you know, there's a change in traffic patterns here.
Yep.
People aren't gonna be used to that, and you know, whenever you throw up a stop sign, I think you have to evaluate the need to have a stop sign there. And I have no question that there's a need to have stop signs at all these intersections, I'm not doubting that. What I do worry about is that humans are creatures of habit, and if I'm going through this intersection five times a day. And and a kid assumes that I'm gonna stop because there's a new stop sign there and I don't, and I run him over, that could be more of an issue. I would rather see this going to effect during the summer, to where people can get acclimated to seeing the stop signs throughout the summer months and driving that route. Than doing it in the middle of the year, I mean, I I, and I, I get the the urgent need and the concern here, it's just, when we add stop signs, I I get nervous about that.
The only.
I still stop at Fourteenth Avenue in North Maple, every time I go through that intersection, because I did it for years and years and years. They took the stop sign out of that intersection, but I still stop and people honk at me, you know, wondering what I'm doing, so. It's just because I'm a creature of habit, I don't want the kids to run out of the school. Assuming that somebody's gonna stop for a stop sign that wasn't there two weeks ago, but it's there now, and uh, and we have a fatal, so.
Also, the road, this this road, this twenty-three kind of goes on the highway south and loops around, that's one of the two ways to get through.
So, you know, one of the things is, is I would, you know, probably solicit some input from Brad. On this to see if a deputy would be able to sit at these intersections for a couple days after the signs are implemented to just. You know, watch the traffic flow through there and make sure that traffic is obeying the the stop sign, so I just don't wanna cause a problem.
The only good part is, the school isn't going to open up on the west side of the road until. I think right after the first year, so there'd be a whole month before kids went back and forth.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And that's why we're trying to get it done now.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I. Understand that totally, so, but I, and. Mr. Reed wouldn't have a problem coming in and talking to you guys next week, because I talked to him about that, because I told him I'd introduce it to you guys today. And uh, if you guys wanted to talk to him, he was more than willing to come in next week and.
Yeah, I guess.
You guys, so.
I guess I don't have any problems, I, you know, and if any of the neighbors have any concerns or anything else, we'd probably encourage them to. Does contact us throughout the week and let us know.
Like I said, I talked to the mayor and he had no.
Yeah.
Issue with us putting up stop signs by the school, so.
Okay.
Because we, we take care of the snow removal on both of those streets, so.
Yeah.
I don't think we've answered Rick's question yet, can he dig the holes and put the stubs in?
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna hurt him.
Before the ground freezes. It's not gonna hurt anything to have them there, you know.
Okay, nobody's gonna fall over them or trip over them or.
They stick up above three inches above, and they're off on the shoulder, so.
That's like.
And we can, we can stick a flag in them.
Thank you, that's an ankle breaker.
We'll stick a flag in them.
So the dogs can find them.
I mean, this is still an unbudgeted expense for the smallest.
Correct, or prove it, correct, you know, next week, I guess, so.
You know, that's, that's fine, I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to it, I just wanna make sure if we do it, we do it.
On the agenda.
Methodically, so it's done right.
On the agenda for next week, we'll be, take care of it.
Yeah. Perspective on this. Sure, all right, what else you got on your report?
I'm, I'm done with report.
So, so we're gonna jump down to.
Went on to that, so.
So you have a, as Mr. Big, you have a lot of.
I have one before that.
One before that, so you're, yeah, okay, number eight, so number, number eight is action to approve a Sourcewell bid for dump body.
Okay.
For a truck at the highway department as budgeted in twenty twenty three.
Excuse me for interrupting you, um.
Wanted to read the full agenda item. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, this, this is the same dump body that we put on all the other trucks, the only thing that was added was a plow hitch. I guess I didn't give you one of these, I'm sorry. But I was gonna print them off and I printed off mine and. I don't know.
Well, I emailed it separate, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I was gonna print them off, so we each had one and I forgot, so. The total price is seventy seven thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars, this also includes a plow hitch, beans, we do not have a mechanic right now. So that way we. Could add that on to the truck, and it is a Sourcewell bid, so. And this is who put all of our bu- other bodies together. And I'm still waiting to hear when our truck is going to come, but I have to get this. going, so when the truck comes, hopefully this is ready, so it can all be matched together at this, about the same time.
What's the cost to get it?
You're saying this might be twenty twenty-five?
No, no, not, seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Golly.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that as budgeted in twenty twenty-three.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Schwer, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Was, you know, that motion carries, okay, number nine, scrolling down, we have a number of, uh, big, so Bridge Improvement Program requests that we need to go through. Why don't you take us through, so the first one ends in, uh, zero two five, the, the bridge ID number.
Okay, this is a bridge application for replacement on County Road Two, which is Cottonwood Street, north of town. This is just about straight west of South Shore. I think we put in an application once before on this, this bridge was load limited last year, I do believe, and, uh, it's another one for the big program, put in an application for to help get it replaced.
So what, so the, uh.
This is, this is a eighty-twenty match, the county would have the twenty percent, which would be five hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Whole shebang, okay.
Move to approve to make the application.
So, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Was, you know, that motion carries, okay, we got two more big improvement, Bridge Improvement Program requests, um, next one, which one ends in one hundred?
Okay, this is on County Road Six, one mile west of the Dakota Sioux Casino, this is for riprap under the bridge. The estimated cost is three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, with twenty percent match would be ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars on the counties.
Check that number again, you sure it wasn't the four hundred and ninety-nine?
No.
Oh, excuse me, yep, I was looking at the grant application in the, yep, sorry about that.
You're only a hundred thousand off.
Yeah, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars.
Correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
What's that, is that?
So, motion by Van Duzen, second by Johnson, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Was, you know, that motion carries, okay, we have one more.
Okay, this is on County Road Three, which runs north and south, be north of two twelve and south of Waverly. This is also for riprap under the bridge to help protect the bridge, and the proposed grant is two hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. With the county's match of twenty percent would be forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, I got my phone in the right place this time.
So the total was, the total.
Total was two hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars.
This, this wouldn't be a, a structure that they would come back and want to put a culler in.
Though the bridge and everything is still in good shape.
Okay.
It doesn't have any issues, other than it's, it's old, you know, but we have to, because we were under the bridge here a couple years ago, and it was washed out underneath where it comes down on the ends, and we poured cement ourselves under there, but now we have to get riprap on that, protect that, so it doesn't just keep washing underneath the bridge to, uh, take it out.
Move to approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer, any questions, discussion?
Um, Rick, the preservation score on that, the, the lower the score, the better chance of getting the, the grant, I assume, or the higher the score?
You want that to get higher.
Okay, so the higher.
Yep.
I noticed on the first one that there wasn't a preservation score, was that?
First one was forty-one point six.
Oh, there it is, okay.
And the, on the other one with the riprap, there wasn't, uh, a score on those.
Okay.
Other questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Was, you know, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Alright, next item on the agenda is the Facility Manager for his monthly report. We wait anxiously every month for the Facility Manager.
Morning Steve.
Morning Steve. Good morning, it's, I have to apologize, my right hand didn't catch my phone for the disturbance.
Was your phone the one that was ringing a little bit ago?
No, that was not mine.
Was that Terry?
That was mine, it's.
Donuts, uh, somebody.
Filled with clatter of.
Alright, let's start out, um, the egg building, uh, events such as, um, Great School Turkey Bingo Auctions Meetings, and of course, the Cuddington County Coat Giveaway was this past month. Um, coming up, Jordan Mack Half Show this coming Saturday, um, I've already turned around and contacted the city, we're gonna put a few barricades to help a little bit for the ICE um, people at this ICE Arena, um. Government building, meant with Johnson Control and their engineers were walkthrough for the generators and fire, and sprinkler system this last month. Um, gonna get the plans put together for them for the, um, egg building and stuff, and so they can start drafting that up. Um, got the dark shades installed down at the Clerk Court yesterday, um, they really like them, it does black it out, so. Um, Detention Center, staff has been working on several instances of shredded linen stuffed in toilet drains and feces spread all over the ceiling walls, um, that's been pretty common here in the last month or two, I don't know what happened, but.
This is one of the challenges of a jail.
Yes, it is. Um, they also cut holes in the walls for the intercoms that were to be installed last year already, and they are now installed. Um, electricians have been here a couple times, in fact, there's this morning also, working on doors in the medium, um, cells. Um, they installed the new doors, but of course, didn't replace the old wiring in the walls, so they're having issues right now with the wiring on the, on the doors. It doesn't seem like the signal noise want to kick in and kick off, so they can't get the door open, off and on. Um, park, um, installed another nine hole baskets in the back northeast section of the park. Um, I have the gates open, um, out at the park, they're gonna be open till December fourth. Excuse me, dry, um, so that way people can play these courses and so that during this timeframe, um, I'm figuring by then, we might have some snow, and I'm just gonna close it by then, so.
Hope you're on.
Uh, the Sheriff's Department as well, where that it's open, so they come through.
I've had some communication with some of the residents in that area, and you probably will hear some.
Oh.
They're not used to having traffic and people down there, like, this time of the year.
Yep. Um. Also, the trees have been transplant, transplanted and been watered, they're pretty good shape and so we had, so. Uh, okay, go on, the weed, um, I'll do spray reports for this year, is as follows. There's five hundred and seventy-three hours of spraying hours with forty-three hundred miles sprayed, eight hundred and forty gallons of two-four D, five hundred and thirty gallons of Torron, and then twenty gallons of, um, aquatic glyphosate with bare ground treatment on Riprap, um, county shop storage area and, uh, county shooting range. Um, attended, uh, district meetings throughout the state, um, and then we'll be attending the Van Dees here in, um, next week, so we have for all the chemical updates. Mosquitoes are, are in the West Nile are at rest for the winter months, so we can be well assured of that. Alright, in general here, um, I'm setting up a AED, um, defibrillator training for the morning and afternoon session um, on December fourteenth at the Watertown Fire Station. They have, they will do some training, um, trying to do morning and afternoon, I would like to turn around and have if quite a few of the departments can send a couple people in, because we do have a couple of them here, and also gonna have the state involved in this, because in case there's an incident, that way they know how to operate these things, devices.
Is, is there a sort of, like an annual certification?
There's, it's part of the CPR training.
Right.
They usually incorporate, it's not mandatory.
No, but I would like to have at least a few, if I can, from each department to attend, right, because you don't know who's gonna be in here if something happens, so.
Yeah, it's very important.
Yep.
That ends my report.
We have any, any juicy agenda items to read, so on, on the, on the, on the Johnson Controls Generator Project, I mean, are they, what do we, so they're still in their drafting detail?
Yep, drafting, yep, yep, I'll be getting them the prints for that, and then this for, also for the sprinkler system, so they can start laying out.
So could they, if they get done, could they, could they actually start doing some of the sprinkler stuff in, since it's indoors in the winter?
And that I do not know how their schedule is, we, we'd like to try to see if we could, but I really, right now with the inventory and supplies, I probably anticipate, probably won't be until later, um, in the year, next year.
Run the project to it, could be kind of hard to do it piecemeal, but, okay.
Can I add on to the, the AED?
Yeah.
Sheriff, that's okay, so, uh, we just, uh, put, installed a new program in the nine-one-one center for folks that are familiar with AEDs around the community. It's called Pulse Point AED, and what that does, it tells our dispatcher where the nearest AED is, so if you have an AED on the first floor of the courthouse, there'll be a picture that shows up, um, in our center, and we can direct people right to where that AED is.
Like a, like a, like a diagram, like a map, building map.
Yeah, yep, so instead of saying.
I did get a letter from Brendan.
Folks saying, do you have an AED available, they'll tell you where the nearest one is and say, run and grab that, so it's kind of, uh, it's important to keep that information up to date, but that's Watertown Fire Rescue and the nine-one-one center partnering to, to do that, so it's, it's a good tool for our folks.
Yeah, I did get a, um, letter from Brendan Sullivan, and I did read that, yeah, I'll have to get on and get that registered.
Perfect, yeah.
So, just so people know what we're talking about, some, some people might not know what AED stands for, so it's automated, like.
Automatic External Defibrillator.
Okay, so it's the thing to, you know, it's part of the CPR.
To jumpstart a heart.
Yep.
When somebody's.
The paddles, basically.
So, alright, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Alright, next on the agenda is number twelve, um, action to approve chop shadowing for L A T C, um, Human Services Tech Student.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I, this is just another student that's requested to come and job shadow, she's a student at Lake Area Tech's Human Service Technician, she's actually a high school student though, um, doing the program at Lake Area, and so would like to come and learn more about what we do and what social, the social work field is.
This is a student from the Lake Area though, right?
Right, she, yes, she's, she's taking the program at Lake Area, but she happens to be a high school student.
She's using the, the program where it allows high school students to take the college courses.
Move to approve.
Motion by Johnson, second, second by Schwer, any discussion questions? Hearing none, all in favors, uh, please say aye.
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 Great, thanks, I think I can just sign.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Clear to work, good.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, have a great evening.
You too.
Okay, number thirteen, we, uh, that's, number thirteen is actually to approve an M Y U between SDSU and Cuddington County for provision of items relating to four H in Cuddington County. Um, so we have a new agreement, but I think we might, we just need, there's a couple items on there that are different that we'd like to review, I think, um, specifically pertaining to liability, just to make sure.
Right, and this has been sent on to the state's attorney, I just had it on the agenda in case she was able to get back to us before the meeting, but, yep.
Need to touch more time on that, so.
Let's put it on next week.
So, and then, um, so that brings us to what we were talking about before, fourteen and fifteen, so fourteen is action to renew employee health insurance coverage and with the Sanford Health Plan. And, uh, let me share the thing that we were talking about, I did get it on my email, by the way. So people can see what we're talking about. So this is the, uh, so basically the rates, um, that um, that represented from Kranz Insurance gave us with, for, so we have three plans, see, uh, one with, uh, a thousand, a thousand dollar deductible, one with, this is talking, yeah, for single and family, one with two thousand for single and family, and then the, the, uh, see, to show the premiums on this, this sheet here. I don't think we showed the total premium, but you can see the split at the bottom, let me show, let me, let me project the other one, so it's a little clearer. See, so people can see what we're talking about. Okay, so the, we have, uh, so you, you can see the, the premium rates there, so that, um, it's probably easier just to look at, it's probably easier to look at this one. So, so we need a motion to do, we're basically, we're talking about, we need a motion to do or take action on just the, the plans themselves, um, and so the details of the plan are on these sheets, on this sheet, right? That's first one we need a motion on.
Right, so basically, it's on the new premium rates for the single, um, the thousand dollar, the two thousand and the four thousand.
Yep, and the four thousand one is the one with the HSA.
And those amounts are nine forty-four fifteen, eight fifty-five twenty-five, and six seventy-one sixty-four. And then on the family side, if you want to read those, Lee.
Yeah.
What those new premiums, a thousand, the two thousand, and then the four thousand.
Yes, the one thousand for the families, the premium is two thousand, hearing sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents, um, for the, uh, two thousand dollar deductible, for a family, it'd be two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents, and then for, um, the four thousand dollar deductible, so with an HSA, um, that'd be one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eleven cents, so that, that's the part we need to improve for the first motion. Yeah, and it's Sanford.
I move we adopt that.
Okay, so motion by Schwer.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any other, any other discussion? We had questions, it's, the re, reinsurance company representative has left the room, so, alright, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Was, you know, okay, that motion carries, and then the, the other part of it is the, are the splits, so how much, basically how much we cover and how much the employee covers, um. So you can see, it's at the bottom here, or the, or on the other one, you can see it, uh, on this sheet, so you can see the, what, uh, uh, under each premium, it shows the county payment, and then what the employee would pay in the, in that light green shading, so, so that's.
So if you want to run through those just forward.
Yeah, okay, good idea, okay, so, so, uh, essentially for the thousand dollar, um, no HSA single plan out of the nine hundred forty-four dollars and fifteen cents, the county would cover nine hundred twenty-five. Um, for the two thousand dollar deductible plan with no HSA single, um, since the premium's under nine hundred twenty-five, we'd end up covering, the county would end up covering the whole eight hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Yeah, so then, yeah, so it's going back to the first one, um, you can see the employee would pay nine, nineteen dollars and fifteen cents for the thousand dollar deductible plan, player wouldn't end up paying anything for the two thousand dollar, dollar deductible plan. And then the last single plan is the four thousand dollar deductible with HSA, so the county would cover nine hundred twenty-five dollars of that, and that would get spread between, cover both the premium and, and another contribution to the HSA, and plus we, plus to, you know, for just, if people want to elect the HSA, well, it's just a kind of a one-time offer, the county would, would contribute another thousand dollars to that HSA. Um, and then on this, on the family side, uh, for the thousand dollar deductible plan, the county would, would contribute uh, sixteen hundred dollars, and that's out of a premium of two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents, which would leave the employee responsible for seven hundred sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, and then on the two thousand dollar level for the single, no, or, sorry, sorry, the family, no HSA, um, the county covers another sixteen hundred dollars again, and that's out of two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents, leaving the employee responsible for three, five hundred thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents. And then on the four thousand dollar deductible with the HSA, so the health savings account, the premium is, uh, um, sixteen seventy-nine eleven, so, and the county would cover sixteen hundred, leaving the, the employee responsible for seventy-nine eleven, and then on top of that, the county would contribute a thousand dollars, just one time, just this year, um, to the HSA. So that's, that, hopefully that explains the split, so, so we need to, we need to approve the splits separately. So we need a motion.
I think you have a motion on.
You have a motion, in a sec.
We already voted on.
That was for the plan.
That was for the plans, that was. That was for the plans, that was for the plan.
Did we vote?
We did.
Oh, okay.
And you did a good job, too.
Okay, well, I voted aye, so.
That was number, number thirteen, so we're on number fourteen now, so, I'm sorry, we're on fifteen, so I was number fourteen, okay. Yeah, thank you, thanks, thanks, madam auditor, all right, so number, so we're talking about number fifteen, talk about the splits, how much the county's gonna pay?
I'll make a motion that we accept these recommended splits.
Okay, so motion by Van Duzen.
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's see, no, motion carries, and I know um, a little bit behind the par curve this year, because this was kind of a new thing we need to to talk about with our, you know, with our unions and things, so, but um. Now the employees need to make their final decisions on which plan they'd like, so thank you for that. Um, number sixteen, uh, I think I'd like to move that, I'm the one to put that on the agenda for uh, to appoint some new members to the County, County Justice Advisory Committee, um, so. I think I, I need to wait till next week on that one. And then number seventeen.
No abatements.
No abatements.
We do have a claim for payment, though.
Oh, boy, okay.
That goes to the city of Watertown for the nine-one-one surcharge for September in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred five dollars and seventy-seven cents, and you'll be recusing yourself.
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, so. Which man does this?
Moves approved.
Motion by John.
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer, any discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's see, no. That motion carries.
Okay, we do have a couple um, automatic budget supplements also, so we will have one going to the county park budget, we receive some insurance dollars for. The replacement of the re- remainder of the trees, and then a second um, for the claim in it, for the water damage at the park as well, and so that amount. That will be going back into the county park budget is twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and four cents. And then we also have another ERA two amount that will go back into the welfare office budget, and that amount is thirty-nine thousand, one hundred seventy dollars and twenty-five cents.
Move to approve.
By Van Duzen. Second, second by Waterman. Discussion questions? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's see, no, that motion carries.
All right.
And so we got some, I guess, no, no.
We have one travel request for weed and pests to go to the Van Dees year end meeting.
Move to prove.
No motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Questions, discussion on the travel request? Hearing none, all here, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's see, no, that motion carries. Hey, um, public notices, number twenty-two, um. So we have possible form commissioners November thirtieth, I think we still got, we got a meeting between now and then. Um, that's for the uh, Farm Business Bank, but. Um, Justice Advisory Committee meeting is scheduled for December fourth, um, that's in the courthouse, I know some commission, but. There's two of us, uh, Commissioner Van Duzen and I are actually on the committee, but I, I know there's a lot of interest in that topic, so easily have a forum there. And I think there's a, the non, the uh, the nonprofit open house thing that the GOS is putting on, that's on Giving Tuesday, so that's next. Two, that's, that's the, so we still have a meeting between now and then, but it's Tuesday evening next week. Um. Anything else? Possible form of commissioners, all right? Any old business?
Actually, um, we have one more item that in related to the health insurance, and that is on the provider that will be providing the HSA or managing that account, which is called Further. So we kind of talked about that, but it, it, yeah, we were gonna make it part of that and did not, so I don't know how you want to do that.
Probably need to go back to, then that would be to go back to number fourteen. Um, do we have, is there a?
Um, and I don't know where we ended up with the management fees, and Jamie's still here, okay, she'll come and explain it.
Yeah, that would be good. Sorry, finish up, so this is actually part of number fourteen.
Yes.
In the meantime, are there any uh, any old business? New business? I did have a, we did have another meeting of the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, um, Executive Board, and uh. Did you to talk more about legislation, um, and the, the, the uh, results of that summer study, that legislative summer study on county funding. Um. Not really much new to report, just kind of more discussion about, you know, the various proposals, again, um. A lot of kind of thought about, you know, uh, where can counties kind of cooperate, consolidate services, and a lot of talk about veteran service officers across the state or emergency management, those are kind of the. Some of the, some of the areas that we talked about, but uh, we have another meeting in early December to continue that discussion, I'll try to keep you guys updated. So, okay, we need a little bit of explanation on, on, so we got number. Number fourteen was our action to um. Renew the the health insurance coverage with the Sanford Plan, but it was, since we have that HSA. There is a, an aspect that we, we need to make sure, we probably needed, should probably do a separate motion.
Yeah.
Under the auspices, yeah.
You could do an emergency one, since it really, I don't know, however you want to do it, your choice.
Well, what, can you, can you give?
So, yeah, and Jamie can say, so um, with the HSA, then you have another um, vendor that will manage these accounts. And I'm not sure, do we get that determined, there will be a charge per month for individual. On what those management fees will be as well.
So the ones that are on um, the application, um, there's a premium, select, and a value. Ranging from one dollar per account up to four dollars. Um, monthly, um, what I have kind of researched so far, while it's still kind of waiting to get an answer, is. Um, the dollar one, it just pays less interest, you know, on the money that's in there, um, so. They said the sales team that's gonna be reaching out, it's kind of, it's kind of determined with them, so. You know, they could throw you out an offer and say, hey, you know, we'll administer this for. A dollar in account this year, you know, if you renew, let's say next year, they'll bring it down. So it's, it's kind of a determined with your sales rep that's gonna be reaching out to you, um. So I would say anywhere from a dollar up to three dollars max would be kind of what I would, would assume it should be.
So, with, this is kind of a, in addition to the, so the the splits, so I mean. The other, you know, the, so the motion will be, do we need to, do we need to act on this this week, or do we need to? Can we get more definition?
I think we need to, because I need to fill some paperwork out to get this whole.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
And I, I've reached out to them a couple of times, and Ray has as well, to try to um, put an urgent request and to contact you guys to kind of get your ball rolling on um.
So do we need to approve up to a certain amount?
I would approve up to three dollars.
An account, I need per HSA, per individual HSA.
Yep.
Okay, and then the other piece of that is, there's kind of a split too, so I think. Um. So, I mean, if if those of us that have been, been involved in the discussion, this didn't really, I, I kind of learned about this, but a couple, few days ago, um, but uh. So, does the employee cover that, or do we cover that, and, you know, my suggestion that that would be that the county covers that, since, especially since HSA is kind of a new thing, so, so that's a monthly fee, correct?
Yes.
So. Okay, so, so we probably need a, need a motion that say, would say something like, you know, uh, is that, is that a thing that the chair needs to sign? Uh, is that a contract, or is that just, just?
Just getting information.
Just have to.
There will be a contract.
Yeah.
But just, just for now, we agree to this.
Yeah.
Put in the minutes, agree to this agreement, and then we um, up to a fee of three dollars. Per account, okay, so, and we probably should, since it, it's not really clear on the agenda, we probably, we need to take care of it, we probably should be, uh. Should declare an emergency, and so the motion would be to declare an emergency, and. Do this, so, and if we'd like to make a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, so the motion is, just to make sure that we're clear on this, is that declare emergency and uh, approve the contract for uh, to manage the HSAs. With a fee up to three dollars to be covered by the county, not the employee, right, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
With further, with the company further.
Yeah, the, the name of the company is Further, yeah, that's kind of an interesting name, but, okay, and is there a second to Commissioner Van Duzen's motion?
I'll second it.
So, so, second by Schwer, so, any other discussion? So similar to an investment, you know, like any other investment account, you know, you have, you do have to pay for some management, at least it's upfront, we know what it is, so. Okay, hearing no discussion, no other discussion or comments, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's see, no. Motion carries, thank you for catching that. Yeah, that's a new thing, so apologize for lack of clarity on the, on the agenda, but it's kind of, HSA is a new thing for the county. So, going back, any other uh, old or new business? Go ahead, go ahead.
Chair, I have something new, personal privilege, if I may, um. Some of you may know, some may not know, that on Saturday night, uh, we lost a good friend and colleague of ours, uh, in a tragic motor vehicle accident. Uh, one mile west of Silver Lake, Minnesota on Highway Seven. Tom Burns, I've had the opportunity of working with Tom in my professional career in law enforcement for over twenty-five years, and uh. Uh, he will be missed, and uh, we would like to. Um, you know, uh, deliver our prayers to the family on Tom's passing. But also keep his wife Carolyn in your thoughts and prayers too, if she's in pretty serious condition in Minneapolis right now, so. Uh, just a tragic incident, but uh, he will be remembered for his work that he did with Cottington County and um. He was, he was a good man, he will definitely be missed.
And he, he was very involved with the, the JDAI, the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, so working with the youth and giving good advice. So we appreciate his, his work, thank you for, for, for mentioning that, for saying that, and then just, yeah, please remember, remember that family in your prayers. Um. Is there anything else?
The one thing that uh, I would like to mention is that this is Thanksgiving week. And I think we all need to just take a moment and, and uh, give thanks to our employees. And all the people that are involved in our county work, uh, the board here. Uh, we're so very, very fortunate to have a uh. The employee and the staff that we have here in Cottington County, when you start getting, now it start comparing with other counties. Uh, we're in good shape here in Cottington County, and uh, we just need to be really thankful for that. So, don't forget to stop and give thanks this week for a moment or two.
Thank God for our good employees. All right, any, anything else, any other comments, public comments, I don't think we have any, any, any other commissioner comments? All right, hearing none, um, we do have a need for executive session, uh, one, I think is. The contract, uh, maybe a security thing as well, security aspect to it as well, um. So is there a motion to move into executive?
So.
Some motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Schwer, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's see, no, that carries, we are in executive session.